Board of Selectmen, Tuesday, 7th, 2017 to order. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Number two, on the agenda is citizen comments. I'd ask if you're going to make a comment tonight? We'll have comments at the end of the meeting also. You're going to make a comment? Hopefully that solves the problem. If you're going to make comments, please come down to the microphone down here. And I would ask, because this meeting can only be an hour long, I'd ask that we limit the comments based on our time to two minutes, depending on how many comments we have. Any citizen comments? There's a mic right down here. Why don't you come down to me?
I'm Bill Shaw, Sixth White Oak Lane, right up the street.
Just a little bit closer to the mic so we can hear you.
Bill Shaw, Sixth White Oak Lane. With these already approved or potential capital projects, with the library for nine million, we're still not finished with the downtown beautification, the academy school, still needing expenditures at Saltman Oaks Park. With all these, in the face of declining enrollment, let's fix what we need to fix and not do new major construction. The state of Connecticut will be no help to us at all because they've got their own problems, we have our problems up there. Let's send option three back to the BOE to rework back to fiscal reality for Madison taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Chip Walls, 57 Stone Road in Madison. I'm here to ensure that we focus on education and maintain Madison schools. Madison should have good school buildings and a superior education system, not the other way around. I encourage you, the Board of Selectmen, to send this back to the Board of Education for a better plan.
Thank you.
Our neighbor Stone Road. I forgot to print out my comments. Aren't you glad? They were loaded with statistics.
Eight pages, right?
Anyhow, I would just like to mention that the town of Madison's grand list has dropped by over $500 million since the Great Recession. And that cost, that reduction in dollar terms, in market value terms, was a loss of $875 million of wealth for the homeowners and property owners of Madison. Since the low point, we have gained back a whole $25 million of that $875 million worth of wealth. I personally do not want to even consider any large expenditures until we see the revenue that is going to pay for them. It's not coming from the federal government. It's not coming from the state. And if we can't produce the revenue, we cannot make the payments on debt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Scudder. I'm at Magnolia Drive. You've all heard from me a number of times. I'm not going to list the reasons why I don't approve of this plan. There's not a bigger supporter of the Madison Public Schools and all the great work they're doing in their classrooms than me and my family. This is not the right plan. Send it back. It's too expensive. It's the wrong plan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tom. My name is Richard Morris, and I wrote and called you today. Thank you for replying to me. I must have been, I live in town, I work in New York, so I've wrote a lot. I don't know all the details of the plan, but what I do know is I know we need improvements in the school system from an infrastructure perspective, but I think we can take a look at it from a different perspective. My wife and I moved to town here 10 years ago. We chose Madison because we thought it had the great school system, great education, great teachers. But Guilford built a beautiful high school. And I look at their high school now, I look at the facilities that they have, and we're not as competitive. And I've spoken with a couple of realtors in town, and people that are moving into town now are saying, or considering this area, are saying, "Let me look at Guilford first because I've heard about their high school." And I just look back and say, "Well, maybe there's a different way of looking at this." I mean, we're going to spend money. We have to improve our schools. So we're going to spend more money on taxes. Let's do it so that we're more competitive. So my recommendation and consideration is, and this actually came from Mike Ginsburg, it was really part of, mostly his idea, but I added a little bit to it. But it made sense to me, and the thought was, take Island, maybe sell it. Oh, well, I'm just looking for a full-time facility. Let's consider approaching them. They have their lease extended until 2023 now, but they might be interested in taking something for a reasonable price. Why not make it happen? Take Ryerson and Jeffries, make them K through five. And take Brown, this is a beautiful school, make it six through eight. And take the high school, take Poulsen, and fix it, make that a high school campus so it's an amazing campus where there's a gym, there's a basket, there's a gym, there's a music area, there's a wonderful theater arts area, and there's a pool. Let's make our town more competitive than it's ever been and set ourselves apart from the rest of the competition in the area. Because ultimately, we all have to sell our homes here someday. And let's put ourselves in a position where we have competitive advantage. So thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear the comment? Craig, come on down.
Hi. Can you hear me? Meg Walls, Newcombe, 14 Los Angeles Drive. For years, obviously, this plan has been in the works. And I've sort of stepped away from it and sort of defaulted because I really genuinely believes that the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools had the best interest of the education in mind and the town in mind. And that it would all, that the plan would be a reasonable educational-minded plan. Unfortunately, the plan that has opened is not focused on education. It's focused on building and passing the buck and deferring, passing the buck further down the road. And that's a real problem. I mean, the schools need maintenance, they need upgrading. But there's four, arguably three, schools that need it, not just one. And this plan only has one. And it's just 50% of the kids from K to four are going to be satisfied. But Poulsen still needs major rehab, Jeffrey still needs major rehab, and quite frankly, Island still needs major rehab. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move along in the agenda. Number three, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Engineering Department in the amount of $25,139 to fund the Arts Park roof replacement project.
Sub move. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion?
Tom, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I'm still troubled by the processes to how we got here. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I'm still having a problem with the process, how we got here. I repeatedly asked to see whatever communication came from Town Council regarding the questions we had with the, how this bid was awarded the first time and the second time. And it's not even clear from our agenda just who we're awarding this to eventually. We're appropriating the money, but our agenda does not include the actual award of a contract today. So I'm prepared to vote in favor of this, but I think this has just been handled in an extraordinary fashion, and I don't want to see us handling future things such as this in this manner.
Extraordinary. This is to award the bid to the original awardee and to make up the difference that was missing in the award. We had $75,000 in the fund. It's since been depleted to $72,000. So what we need to do is increase it by $25,000 to bring us up to the $89,000, which the original bid included, plus $9,000, which was a contingent expense based on the fact that there might be some additional work that needed to be done. I've spoken with the contractor who would get the award. He's willing to look at the $9,000 additional to see what he can do to cut that down. He was unable to cut anything off the original bid of $89,000, but he's willing to try to do what he can, if the $9,000 is needed, to make that be less than $9,000. And so based on that, I'm suggesting that we award it back to the person that we originally awarded it to. I thought it was worthwhile to try to find an alternative that was cheaper, that would allow us to fix the roof and not have, not have to spend $90,000. But going through the process and talking with the contracts, there's a few other people, including our attorneys and the architect who originally specked out the job, it doesn't appear that we're going to be able to save any more money in the long run. And rather than spending more money in the long run, I decided to propose that we do it this way.
So Tom, what was the response of Town Council?
What was the question?
Well, we asked Town Council, a proposal that got brought to us by you that we award the bid to a second contractor. This board originally approved a bid back in December to a contractor. And then I praise you for seeking to save money, but when you involved the second contractor and asked us to award a bid to the second contractor, our question to you was, "Don't we have an obligation to the first contractor that we originally awarded it to?"
Okay, so first of all, you're incorrect when you say, "I asked you to award the bid." I didn't. I asked us to review the bids and create a referendum. And I never suggested awarding it to anybody else until we talked to the attorney, which I did as well. And the attorney said, "Because we awarded the first bid, if we go with the full roof job, we have to go to the original bidder. If we go to a different job, we can award it to anybody we wanted to." And so what I did was, I went back, did a lot of homework to try to make sure we were doing the right thing, and came up with the, what I just explained to you a little while ago, that the cheaper way to do this in the long run would be to do it all at once. And so that's what I suggested.
I think, just to add on to what Al was saying, I think all we're asking for is a bit more transparency. So I do recall in one of the meetings previously where, you know, we did ask, "Does it see that in writing from the attorney?" So that would have been helpful, just to make sure that we're making it informed as well prior to walking in the room. I was unaware that we were coming back and looking at this special appropriation until yesterday, when it came up on the agenda. Do you know whether or not this appropriation or the funds of the 72K incorporates available funds for the architect as well? I know we had re-engaged with the architect. We have to pay the architect for some services that he provided, and then also potentially for some future construction, architecture that he has to also provide. That was information that I learned.
The money I talked about that was depleted from the fund is to pay the architect.
The 72K.
It's down to 72 because we have to pay the architect for what he did. The architect rebid the job at a cost of $2,000. So that's what that money was for. So we have paid that, and this money will take care of the roof job that needs to be done. Any other comments? There are none. Ask for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four, discuss and take action to approve an expenditure not to exceed $15,000 to the purchase of a new boat engine out of Madison Boat Company Number One Truck Replacement Reserve.
Second.
Discussion?
Tom, we have some documents in our package here. Can you help us understand? Are these three separate bids? What do we look at here?
Yeah, Craig, Kittle's here, he can explain it.
Hi, Al. There's three different bids that have come up tonight.
Oh, really?
We're blinded by the light. Can't see. I'm sorry, I got hit. Al, Jeff Young, Lieutenant, the Lieutenant for the department, went out and got three separate bids for the boat motor. Unfortunately, when we went to put the boat in service this spring, the check engine light came on. We did a little testing with it, and then there was a knock in the lower unit, which was bad. We had it serviced, checked again, and the cost to repair it was over half of what I'm asking for to replace the new motor. And being a safety boat and going out and rescuing it, we didn't feel it was fit to replace that motor. Three different bids, and out of all three bids, the $12,426,40, the oldest bid is the one we would like to go with. It's pretty much the same motor that lasted.
Sorry, how long?
14 years. So we figured out a great motor. How we use the motor, it worked out well, so that's what we're asking. So we can get the boat back in the water.
Tom, one more question. Do we, I see we're approving the funds. Do we need to actually award this bid? Award the contract goes to the required company. They're going to award it.
It wasn't a bid, it was just three quarters.
Yes, three separate quarters. We would like to go with the first page that you got.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, following line transfers are designated as routine and appropriate for approval as a single action by the Board of Selectmen if so desired.
Sub move. Second.
Motion is to approve the line transfers totaling $17,850.80. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, consider and act on a resolution approving and referring to the Board of Finance for its approval and recommendation on appropriation and the authorization of bonds and notes to finance the appropriation for costs related to the demolition of the existing Ryerson Elementary School at 982 Durham Road in Madison, and the design, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new kindergarten through third-grade elementary school on the same parcel as the existing school. Setting a town meeting and referendum to consider and act on such recommendations and making various determinations in connection therewith.
Sub move. Second.
Discussion? I'll start off. We've had a lot of people ask us to ask the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, to reconsider. So I'd like to just call on Superintendent Skarice to comment.
Thank you for a few moments up here. I'll start just by saying, in the most sincere way, it is heartening to hear sincere comments from the community about the educational program, how important that is. It's not the same in every community.
Tom, you need to get closer.
I've never been too tall for a microphone. Is that better? How much of a feedback? I'll repeat that. As a superintendent, being in the field for 20 years, it really does mean a lot. And I'm sincere by saying this. It's heartening to hear comments from the community about how important the school system is, and not from just a property value perspective, which I think kind of cheapens the educational system, really from what's best for our kids. And I heard that tonight, and I hear that quite often. So I'm appreciative of that, of the folks that can help us cope with that, and all the audience. I just want to make a few comments tonight. I really want to do my best to kind of frame the last two and a half years in a few minutes, if I can. What I think is, has happened is, in general, we're facing some very complex problems. And in our current pace in the world, I think we look for simple solutions in 140-character tweets to those complex problems. The problems that we're facing are beyond any overly simplified solutions. And what I feel strongly about is that the Board of Ed the past two and a half years has hit these problems head-on and hasn't looked for a shortcut or a simple solution. And what we've had happen is for the past two and a half years is they've considered three very vexing questions. The first one is, how can we really appropriately address the decline in student enrollment? That's not a simple solution. Not in conjunction with problem number two. And the question number two is, how do we address the deterioration of our facilities and establish a long-term plan that can sustain and serve over time? There was a facility study done in 2008, a very comprehensive one. There was minimal action after that. And that can was kicked to this generation right now. The third question is, how do we create learning spaces that reimagine our current facilities so that they can support an instructional program that will prepare kids for their world, not the one that we all experienced out of high school, but their world? Which really is marked by a shrinking job market, a shedding of jobs in the place of machines and automation, robots, artificial intelligence. The world is different, and our educational system needs to be different. And the comments earlier actually point to that in such an inspiring way. There is a recognition and acknowledgement that we have to change the way we teach and learn. Now, I'll contest that. We do it better than just about anybody. And we do it well in some subpar facilities in a number of circumstances. And we don't need much more than very effective, but modernized, flexible learning spaces to do that. But the Board confronted those three questions head-on for two and a half years. They studied them with established experts. Some are with us here tonight. They debated, and I was in those debates. And I listened and took many notes in those debates, and they were vigorous, and they should be. They listened to the community. We had six public forums, one in this room that was very well-attended, and some that were sparsely attended. They designed upwards of 12 different options. They had derivatives of additional options on top of that. They listened to community input again and then made further changes. And a couple of examples of those changes. One of the very first plans was to make this school a K through five school. Okay? And the first tsunami of public input we had is, "Please don't change Brown Middle School. It's a special school, it serves a special age group. Let's do that." So the Board went back to the drawing board and made adjustments to that. The next plan was to make our footprint even smaller and go from six schools to four, which would have reaped incredible efficiencies and saved close to $1.5 to $2 million of operational costs to here, which folks who are mindful of costs were very enamored with. But a number of community members, and some in this room, pointed to, "We don't want 800 kids in a K-2 school. We don't want to lose that flavor in our town, this small town." So that was removed. We also looked at, probably the most information we received and some of the most heated was around the geography of our town and the north-south nature of it. So how do we accommodate for that? And there was someone I admire a great deal, who is a fiscal hawk, and I admire him significantly, who said, "I'll pay," on record, it was a Board of Ed meeting on camera, "I'll pay a million dollars more a year to keep a north-south campus set up." So we know the emotions it provokes. We know the debate that went on. This was all considered. And I just want to be clear that for two and a half years, the Board started in one place and it evolved over time and landed where we are. In addition to all that, we had professional analysis of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection systems by CES, our consulting engineering services. The envelopes of every single facility, including our preschool, which would be the windows, the roofs, the doors, the bathrooms as well, floors, was conducted in a comprehensive manner by Drummy, Roseanne, and Anderson. The basic maintenance needs of just Ryerson and Jeffrey, and this is for just a short-term fix for 10 years, okay? Is estimated, and that's no action besides these basic maintenance needs. For just Jeffrey and Ryerson alone, that number over 10 years approaches upwards of $20 million. These aren't simple problems, and they cannot have simple solutions. They're very, very complex. We also looked at very comprehensive analysis of our enrollment projections, demographic data, market trends, input from the town planner, another person I admire a great deal. We had realtors involved, we had merchants involved, and state demographers. Those trends in enrollment, the median age in town, all being considered. And we have some assumptions in there as well, with an aging population. We looked at historical data and studies conducted on our facilities, which was done in 2008. And I want to say again, some action was taken in 2008 after that study. But when you toured, and we did have our public forums at our elementary schools, and our students toured people around those schools, those were not touched since 2008. Not with anything substantive, with a long-term plan in mind. I said from the beginning that my biggest priority is always the instructional program. There's no one in this room, no one's come to this microphone. You all hear me every single January make my pitch on the annual budget. No one advocates stronger, believes more in what's happened between the teacher and the student and what they learn. But I can't live without a plan as a leader. The Board of Education can't live without a plan. We also considered the GIS mapping of the community, which is where everyone lives, all our kids live, leads to our transportation routes and so forth. We conducted a comprehensive educational specification study. What is truly needed for a basic education in town? And then we looked at our grounds. We did a comprehensive geotechnical study of the conditions of our grounds where our schools exist. So finally, the Board of Ed has arrived at a long-term plan to address, again, very complex problems. The plan isn't simple. And then again, the problems aren't simple. The plan is not perfect. There's not a board member who will tell you it's a perfect plan. I won't tell you it's a perfect plan. I would say that no plan is perfect. And particularly one that aspires to solve such vexing problems. This plan is subject to criticism, speculation, and inspection. And that's what responsible-thinking communities do. And the role of the voters in this town, and if the Boards vote tonight to move the plan to referendum, the voters will do that. From the outset, I'll close with some commitments the Board made from the outset. Because I think this is, this becomes white noise, and it really shouldn't be, because these were priorities early on. The Board made some very big commitments early on. It committed to not saddling the town with an unused facility without a long-term plan, such as academy. The Board has reduced staffing at a rate of one teacher for every 20 students, in addition to reducing administrators, in addition to reducing support staff. It's committed to contracting the size of its footprint, if necessary, and that includes closing the school. And finally, the Board committed to establishing a long-term plan that does not kick the can down the road, hence the 2008 study, only defined short-term band-aids and overly simplified solutions that will burden the next generation. I can assure the community that, number one, there will be a plan for all facilities. We will not experience the problems posed by the former academy school. The school district will contract from six schools to five if we follow this plan. And this plan will serve the community with a long-term perspective that will provide 21st-century security to our elementary schools, 21st-century efficiencies in energy systems, the highest indoor air quality standards, an appropriate maintenance plan for all of our facilities over time, appropriate learning spaces, while adding to the attractiveness of our community for young families. At this point, after two and a half years of analysis, and I'll be very clear, of listening, the Board of Ed did a significant amount of listening and a lot of planning. There is an appropriate plan to consider. The request simply is just to bring this plan to the community and the form of a referendum in September, and let the voters consider that plan and vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. One thing I forgot to mention when I was reading the item on the agenda is that the actual resolution is available in print form. It's several pages. So if anybody cares to get a copy of it, Maria has them down front here. It's a lot of reading. Okay, so I appreciate your comments, Tom. Comments from the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Yeah, I made it, Al's seconded it.
Okay.
So, okay, I guess I'll start things off. Who wants to first?
Sure. Sure. You know, Tom, thank you for that. And you said it much more eloquently than I can. I'm only going to... I'm only going to add that, I was on the Board of Ed when this process started, and table stakes to this work, um, something that we wouldn't negotiate away was, we, we would not degrade the quality of education, um, either as a result of this process or even while the work was being done. So first and foremost, um, the, the kids' needs were always going to be taken care of, and none of the proposals were considered if they were going to adversely impact the kids. And, um, Tom and the Board of Ed have gone to great lengths to, um, maintain that, and in the end, went to great lengths to explain how their proposed solution in fact would not adversely impact the kids. So I want, I want to thank you for that, because you've stayed true to one of the original, um, premises of, of this work through what feels like ten years, but it's really only been about three and a half. Secondly, uh, as a former Board of Ed member, I've, uh, I've paid close attention to this, I've gone to the public meetings, I've heard the public comment, I've seen the board move through all of the different options, which, when you add them up, we're really probably closer to thirty to forty options. Uh, we talk about twelve a lot, because those were sort of the high-level options, and then there were multiple derivatives of them. And some of them, um, one of the ones I suggested was outlandish and involved building a new high school. Um, so, we really did try to think outside the box when I was on the board, and I think that the board has continued to work hard to think outside the box and do what's right in the long-term interest of the town. And I recognize that with declining enrollment, um, the school district is going to have to contract. This seems like a reasonable plan for the town to consider in referendum, and while I know that there are a lot of people here who think that it's appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to step in this evening and stop the process, it is absolutely not appropriate for us. Um, our form of government is a town meeting and referendum form of government. You folks, the taxpayers, are the ones who ultimately decide these things, and it's not appropriate for us to decide on your behalf. We are not here to take the vote away from you. So I intend to support this because I think it's reasonable, uh, I think it's well-thought-out, I think it does take into account the, um, input from the community over the last several years. It is not perfect, it is a compromise, um, but it's a compromise born of dozens of different considerations and variables, not the least of which is financial. So I, I, with gratitude, I thank you for bringing this to us, and I look forward to supporting this tonight and seeing it through. I also want to add, there's been some concern that this is being viewed as a one-phase strategy. So, uh, I think it's important for everybody to hear and to continue to repeat, this is phase one of a two-phase strategy, okay? The mechanics of how we deal with these things dictate that we take this referendum issue up first, but as soon as we successfully navigate the first referendum, we will begin work on crafting the second referendum. And then, aside from that, through our CIP process, we will be, we will be looking at the other schools. So the repairs that we need to do that don't rise to the level of referendum will get handled through our capital planning process. So we are talking about one thing tonight, but we are cognizant of all of the things that need to be done for the district to, um, to preserve the quality of education, to update the buildings as appropriate, and to manage that process through the appropriate town process. So please don't think that we are going to do this once and forget about it. Um, the Board of Ed is not going to forget about it, I'm not going to forget about it, um, and I am confident that the community is not going to forget about it.
Our town charter of guides the selectmen in making it clear that in Madison, the voters are the legislative body of this government, not the elected officials. It is not our role to substitute our judgment for those of other elected officials who are more well-versed in this issue. It is not our role to prevent the public from having its opportunity to formally vote on this proposal. The test as to whether to send this to the voters is not whether we have some misgivings about the proposal, the test is not whether we think we know how the voters will respond to this proposal, nor is the test what our personal views are on this proposal. Rather, the test is whether this proposal is well-researched, studied, documented, and the product of transparent and lengthy public process. That is to say, is this issue well-framed for the public so that the public has the information to vote on whether or not to approve the proposal? I congratulate and salute our Board of Education members for their diligence in well-framing this proposal. Thus, I will vote yes to send this to referendum, so that all the voters will have an opportunity to decide on the merits of this proposal.
First of all, uh, thank you for all your passionate public feedback on this issue
throughout the process. It's been very helpful for us, especially me as a newer selectman, to hear your voices and understand what you're thinking, so I appreciate that. Um, I'd like to publicly thank the Board of Ed, uh, Tom and Gene certainly, uh, leading the, leading the pack there, for all their hard work, passionate dedication on this issue. I know it's been challenging, but you should feel very proud of your, your efforts. This has been a very open and transparent process. There has been plenty of opportunity for public input throughout this very thorough analysis conducted by our Board of Education members and colleagues. I have three kids of my own and completely recognize the unavoidable disruption this will cause, uh, in, in town, to our parents, administrators, teachers, and most importantly, the kids. Change is hard, but it is needed. If this issue is left unresolved, we will end up wasting considerable funds, as Tom pointed out, to maintain old and outdated facilities, I heard upwards of twenty million dollars. As I personally reflect on the options presented, uh, by the Board of Ed, I was in full support, in full disclosure, of option two, which combined the school upgrades into one referendum. I also recognize that our Board of Ed was divided down party lines when the votes were cast for option two and option three. In the end, the only significant difference between the two options is one referendum or two. So while not a perfect solution, ultimately, I will support the recommendation presented to us by the Board of Education. I do not feel that I should substitute my judgment for all the hard work that the Board of Education has put into this recommendation. In the end, I firmly believe that the voters should have the voice in this process, no matter what the outcome may be. Let the voters decide. I will be voting yes.
This is not the first time Madison has done a facility study. The last one we did was several years ago, and resulted in building Daniel Lane High School. At the same time, or just after the high school was completed, this building had a three-and-a-half-million-dollar renovation to overcome some shortcomings that this building had on the day it opened. The Jeffrey School has been added on to and renovated twice. Island Avenue and Jeffrey both have modular classrooms, or as the superintendent says, trailers, but I challenge him to find the wheels.
Oral trailer.
I think this town has a, a history of letting the voters decide on these issues, and I think the Board of Education did an outstanding job in its multiple public hearings. I think I went to every one of them and heard the same thing several times. But they did, they spent a lot of their own time, not just the consultant's time, but the board's time on this, not to mention the school staff and those. I think it's appropriate to send this to the voters for referendum in September, and let the voters make the final decision. And no matter what the voters decide, Madison will end up a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Um, so we're going to open this up to public comment in a little while, and I'll heed my own advice when I will tell you that I'm not going to repeat everything everybody up here said, for many of the same reasons I believe that this should go to referendum. Um, one thing I want people to be clear about is that we're not voting for or against a proposal by sending it to referendum, we're sending it to referendum so that you can vote for it. I think that's the most important thing we can do tonight. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna close my remarks, um, I'm gonna leave it up to everybody else to vote, but I'm gonna call for a vote right now on item number six, uh, whether or not to pass it to referendum. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item number seven is citizens' comments, and we welcome your comments at this point. We have fifteen minutes left. Hearing none, I'll, I'll accept the vote.
Your turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Uh, Board Finance meeting will start at seven o'clock.